Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, November 25th, 2014. I apologize for the lateness of our, the hour here, but we did have to take care of some business. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Mr. Claiborne, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Kaplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. Moving on to the indication, Mr. Allott.
Sure. If you all could just take a few minutes and bow your heads, and in particular tonight, I'd like to think about those individuals in Ferguson who are dealing with a great deal of loss, a great deal of pain, a great deal of hurt, and if we could just think about healing and reconciliation as we bow our heads for a moment in silence. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Pledge allegiance, Ms. Daniels.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to the presentation of Mayor's Budget this evening, I received a request from a group of individuals who would like to talk to City Council about Zumba. So at this time, would you please come to the mic?
How much time? It's 15 minutes.
Okay.
Hi. I have my own paper.
Thank you.
This is a kind of a place.
Okay.
I have a packet.
Thank you.
This is for you as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening. Could you identify yourself, please?
Hello. My name is Adrianne Wilson. I'm a resident of Harrisburg in 1934 Park Street.
Could you speak up just a little bit louder? We have before capacity this evening.
Hello. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? My name is Adrianne Wilson, a resident of Harrisburg and a graduate of Harrisburg High. I'm coming because we were, had some questions about the program in which we have been attending all summer long, which is the Zumba Program, which is one of, three of the dance cards. We were just coming to find out, because we heard that it was not going to continue after December 31st, 2014, so we wanted to know, is it going to continue or is it not going to continue? And if so, if it's not going to continue, is there anything that we can do to continue the program?
Okay. So basically, we're here to try to convince you to keep the program going. The packets all give testimonies from a lot of the members that joined the fitness program that is currently going on. There has been amazing results with a lot of the people there. I personally, since I've joined the Zumba class, the class that we attend is called Zumbalicious. Our trainer is Sandra Sweets Johnson. She's wonderful. She fits the needs of all of us. Several of us have healthcare issues. I personally have arthritis in a hip and knee, and Sandy alters the program to suit my needs as well. There's other people that have been on blood pressure medication, heart medication, things like that, getting into a fitness program where they couldn't originally afford it before, like joining a gym or another program. They've been able to attend this program, and they've come consistently since the program's been free in Harrisburg. We personally appreciate the city doing this for us. We would hope to continue Zumbalicious. Sandy's a very good trainer. She tries to conduce the class so that all of us can be a part of it, and she fits it to our personal needs. Personally, being a homeowner in the city of Harrisburg, a taxpayer, and a voter in the city of Harrisburg, I would love to see the class continue. There's a lot of budget issues, I understand, and there's restraints on money. However, the program does provide an outlet for a lot of women in the city of Harrisburg who could not otherwise join a gym or a program such as a Zumba class or another fitness class, and this provides that outlet for us to go to and attend and still receive fitness from a, from a trainer, a certified trainer. So we hope, and fingers crossed, that you guys continue the program after the end of the year. We would appreciate it. All of the girls here are all from Zumbalicious. They all, they all have their own testimonies. They all have their own success stories from doing Zumba. The children come, the children participate with us sometimes. We've even gone and done it with the cheerleaders up at Camp Curtain. So hopefully, you can see a little way within the budget to keep Zumbalicious going. Sandy is an amazing trainer. I would encourage any of you to come out and join a class. It's great. You'll have a lot of fun. So that's why we're here. We're just hoping that the city will continue to keep this going after January 1st.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I have to apologize. This is the first time I've heard the class being discontinued.
Oh, good. Well, maybe it's not.
Ms. Wilson is our Chair of that particular committee, Arts and Culture, so I'll have her meet with you representatives and also with our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Parker.
Okay.
This is Ms. Wilson at the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you listening to us.
You certainly are welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to the presentation of proposed 2015 budget. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable members of City Council, it's a great pleasure to be before you tonight in a formal capacity to share with you the official 2015 General Fund Budget Highlight Presentation. The presentation tonight is really incredibly exciting and entirely positive, and I think is yet another sign of the stabilization of our city's finances and the continued fiscal recovery for Harrisburg. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge and thank three individuals, namely Finance Director Bruce Weber and also Brian and Yankseya in his office, who worked countless hours to make sure that everything was ready for tonight, and without their, their work, this would not have been possible. I also want to begin by saying it's been a big day for Harrisburg financially. There's been a lot, there's a lot of exciting news. Just moments ago, we sworn a new treasurer, Mr. Tyrell Spradley, took the oath of office and is now officially the treasurer of the city of Harrisburg. He was bonded earlier in the day. Also, earlier in the day today, Judge Ledbetter issued a ruling establishing Impact Harrisburg, which is the new nonprofit which is going to administer millions of dollars in funds that were set aside as a part of the Strong Plan for Economic Development and Infrastructure. And in that order, she also put $75,000 for the city's use for the comprehensive plan, which is, which is exciting. That was at our request. And we were very pleased to say that we have already sent written notice to the Coordinator, Fred Reddick, that the city will be applying. Hopefully, the first applicant to that nonprofit, once it is now officially established, to fund our lighting conversion project. And the lighting conversion project is on the agenda for tonight, at least Phase One, which the Efficiency Network is doing, and that's a very exciting thing for all of Harrisburg. Also today, in the news, you may have heard, and on the agenda here tonight, there's a very favorable consent agreement between the city, the United States Government, CRW, which is very positive from the city's perspective. On the agenda tonight, we have several different ordinances proposed. One is LERTA, which we see as very important and precedent-setting for the city's economic development next year. And another is the vacant property ordinance, which is going to require banks to register with the city if they engage in foreclosure. So all of these things tie to, and will be a revenue generator for the city for next year. All these things tie together and sort of culminate very well as we end 2014 and we look ahead to 2015. And on one final financial note, make a little news here tonight. We are planning to release the 2013 audit tomorrow. So imagine that, an audit for 2013 released in 2014. City hasn't done that for quite some time, so we're very proud of that, and that was a lot of work again for Bruce's staff and the auditors. So if we turn to the first slide, you will see that this is a comparison of the General Fund Budget that we are proposing for 2015, both revenue and expenses, as opposed to the adjusted budget for 2014. And it's important that we can, we compare the proposed, requested budget for 2015 with the adjusted budget for 2014, because as you know, the original proposed budget for 2014 had some, had some problems. As you see, the revenues are projected to be maybe about $100,000 less all total in 2015 than 2014, and I'm going to highlight some of the major reasons why that is as we move forward. I've got four main themes to the presentation this evening, and let's start with number one. Number one is that we have a balanced budget. That's exciting. As you saw from the first slide, projected revenues are expected to exceed expenditures by $10,951. This budget has no accounting gimmicks, such as the now infamous $3.9 million plug in last year's budget, which basically forced the city into a hiring freeze, and despite the fact that you thought you were authorizing all these positions, we didn't have the money to fund them. That does not exist here. So when you see something in the budget, you know it is not reversed somewhere else in the budget. And importantly, no tax increases, which is a big deal, I know, for residents that have already seen taxes increase in past years. So we are stable, we are not increasing taxes, and we have no gimmicks in this year's budget. The second theme is a theme of greater transparency, and City Council members will know that I pledged earlier in the year to make sure that City Council had the authority to determine what would be spent from all of the sort of outside accounts that the city had previously and historically kept off-book. They're called TNA accounts, trust and agency accounts, there were all sorts of them, hundreds of thousands of dollars in money spent on things ranging from parks and recreation to you-know-what that were basically established as a means of allocating funds without council approval. We have closed those accounts, and we are moving them on-budget, and we are doing that for the first time here for the city, and I'm going to explain that as we move forward. But we have established six special revenue funds, which is where we're putting the money, and then those funds, allocations from those funds will be subject, of course, to council approval. We've made proposals for some, and for others, we're just, we're just putting them on-book so that you know they exist for next year. In addition to, and that's really quite a big deal. In addition to that, we are proposing a budget for the host fee, and we will talk about that as we move forward. Theme number three, and I think this will, will come as quite welcome relief to the residents of Harrisburg. We are planning, again, really for the first time in anyone's memory, to do a major investment in our Public Works Department and in sanitation. As you know, last year, basically, there was a push for privatization that resulted largely from the fact that we had run our fleet into the ground, we hadn't hired when we needed to hire, and we couldn't provide a quality service to the residents of Harrisburg. I will talk about more on this in a moment, but our goal in 2015 is to improve the quality of service, actually make an investment in sanitation, which we should have done long ago, and have better service for, for all of the residents. That's going to include a major reorganization, which we will talk to you further about, of both commercial and residential trash, and a huge push for recycling in 2015. And then, theme four, the final big-picture theme before we get a little bit more into the weeds, is continued growth in public safety personnel. I want you all to take a look at that graph. 2014, we currently have 138 sworn officers in the police department. That does not include, like Mr. Botero or secretaries or others, those are sworn police officers. That's, that's up from 100, a low of 129 in 2013, and in this budget, we are proposing to get up to 147 sworn officers by the end of 2015. That continues that positive growth and trajectory. In fire, it's a similar positive growth and trajectory. We have 76 active firefighters at the moment. That's up from 62 back in 2013, and in 2015, we are proposing 80 plus one. The reason it says plus one is because we're taking one position in fire and civilianizing that position in an effort to save resources and allocate them elsewhere in the budget. There's a sort of secretarial administrative position in fire, which does not need to be done by an actual firefighter. So there'll be 81 in fire, 80 firefighters, and one administrative in 2015. Okay, so those are the four big themes, and they're all positive for the city of Harrisburg. I'm not going to go into detail about every aspect of the budget, but I'm going to highlight some of the, some of the major, major things that are different about fiscal year 2015 than were true for fiscal year 2014. The first, and so, so why, first of all, why, why is revenue and expenditures, why is it slightly less than last year? You can begin to understand that when you recognize that for fiscal year 2015, we are expecting a lot less from Capital Region Water than we did this year. That is due in part to the fact that Capital Region Water will be taking over its own billing, they will no longer be renting space from the city of Harrisburg, and we have moved to a, a new billing mechanism for street, street sweeping. In the past, we had gone with a sort of estimated number for, for, for this year, and now we are going with actual billing amounts, and that's something that we worked out with Capital Region Water. We're also going to expect a little bit less in EIT than we had in our adjusted budget for 2014. That's simply an effort to be conservative. We don't know where the EIT numbers are going to exactly end up at the end of this year, and we want to be conservative there in terms of our budgeting. But that's offset because we are expecting about $500,000 more from the parking, and that has to do with the bond indenture, which basically, in the Strong Plan, went up from $1.5 million this past year to $2 million next year, and that should offset the, the EIT. Also important to know that we are paying less in debt service in 2015 than we are in 2014, and that is due largely to not having a payment to Sun Trust, which we did have as a payment for 2014. And then, continuing our efforts to be transparent, we are, we are taking some funds from, that were sort of old balance sheet items, and we are putting them into the budget. These are one-time transfers that are going on-book. We are proposing $250,000 to go towards the newly-formed Harrisburg Land Bank as seed money for our War on Blight, and another $100,000 for the comprehensive plan. That's in addition to the money that, the $75,000 that Judge Ledbetter just announced today. So we'll have enough to do what we really need to do in terms of having an excellent comprehensive plan. Those are one-time transfers, so we can't count on them next year, but as I say, they were on the balance sheet, and we're moving them in with your approval into the actual general fund budget. Some highlights for public safety, just so you know, there's $200,000 being proposed for additional police vehicles, which is very important. That is in addition to $200,000 that we are proposing for SRO vehicles. That is contingent on finding the funding for those vehicles, which would either come through the school district as part of an agreement with them or through an outside grant funding source. I didn't put this in, but we've also applied to the county for new K-9 vehicles, and we're hoping that those come through as a part of the gaming requisition. So you could see major upgrades with, with all three of those to the current police fleet. There is an overall increased expenditure in the police budget of $100,000, which is just important to reference because, of course, the overall budget is declining, but the police budget is actually increasing. And very important about the fire budget, through the hiring that we've done this year, the promotions and continued hiring that we're going to do next year, we expect to have cut overtime expenditures for the city of Harrisburg in half from what we've spent this year. And the majority of that $1.8 million that we spent this year is actually spent in the beginning of the year when we didn't have the hiring in place and we didn't have the, the contract, the new union contract ratified. That's a major savings which we've been able to reallocate elsewhere in the budget, and it's, it's good for the residents of, of the city. There are 36 new positions that are either currently in the budget that we are trying to hire for now but haven't, or are brand-new positions that we are proposing. So we are going to actually, by the end of next year, have hired 36 new employees that are currently not with us here at the city of Harrisburg. Now, that is in addition, doesn't say that on the slide, but that is in addition, we are continuing to fill vacancies as employees retire. So we no longer have a hiring freeze. Somebody retires, we'll fill that position. But we're talking about new positions that are currently vacant now, and that is really, really exciting, especially when you begin to contrast this with perhaps what is happening in other municipalities in the area of York and whatnot. Some of the new positions, just some, and we will discuss all of these in greater detail when we have our, our budget hearings. We are going to fill the affirmative action position, which I know is very important to council. We are combining that into a new office of risk management, and we feel that that office actually has the ability to pay for itself because there are lots of potential claims that the city just doesn't have the ability to pursue, and we will be doing that as, as part of a new, a new office. We're proposing a new park ranger, paid for out of the budget. I know that folks perhaps would like more than one, but one at least is, is a start, and is more than we've had for the past several years where we haven't had any rangers. A second animal control officer, we currently only have one of those for the city of Harrisburg. A new labor relations coordinator position, that is in part due to a, a reshuffling in HR, in which we had, prior to this year, we tried to combine that into the HR director's position, and now we're pulling it out. We will have to negotiate new union contracts this coming year, and we really need somebody who's sort of, of sole focus and attention is on that. We also need somebody to handle the sanitation billing and can also handle the billing of the enforcement and the fine piece, which will be coming forth. That is an outgrowth and a necessary thing as a part of the transfer with CRW, so that is a new union position. We want to fill two more positions in sanitation. In addition to the major capital upgrades that we're going to talk about, we also want to establish an entire new route, which will require new drivers. We still have to fill two new codes positions, and we met with the union about that today. Those were delayed due to the, the ending of civil service requirements and the need to establish a new process for hiring codes administrators, administrators for the city of Harrisburg. There's going to be a new purchasing manager, and then also mentioned is that we have sort of reconfigured the job description, description of the Business Development Director to now also be the new LERTA administrator. And when we talk about LERTA, we can talk about the LERTA administrator's role, but those are some of the new hirings that we'll be doing here shortly, where the budget to be, meet your approval for the city of Harrisburg. In addition to the new positions, we're also sort of reorganizing, and it, it needs to be said, and is, is fair to say at the same time, that we are not, that one management and 12 union positions that did exist in 2014 but we never ended up filling because of the hiring freeze, we are also not going to fill in 2015. Now, some of those are people who have been rehired into other positions, so that includes, like, some of the parking enforcement officers that, that we knew we let go earlier in the year from the city, but for instance, one of those was hired as our new sanitation enforcement position. And others have simply been transformed as part of a reorganization of IT, a reorganization of HR, and, you know, you see some, even other examples of things. We're now paying for an arborist out of the host fee, so that's a, that's an addition there, and we used to have a gardener position, which we're not going to continue to fill as a part of that. There are some raises. I would call them responsible raises proposed in the budget. This is really a good thing, because people have not had a raise in Harrisburg for too, too long. And there are both union raises and management raises. There's a total of $68,000 or so being proposed for management raises. Those are paid for, in part, by reorganizing management positions, civilianizing that post in fire, lowering the salary, for instance, of the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Director, and a variety of other things. So we're planning, it's basically, we're paying for any raise that we have, we're also paying for by reducing management salaries. The unions, all unionized employees by contract are receiving a 1% increase, and that is totals $171,799. Well-deserved, and that will be much appreciated and seen in next year's budget, and that's an example of how our expenditures have gone up, and in order to meet that, we've really had to reallocate resources that already existed, such as, I mentioned before, the savings for fire overtime. Host fee budget, and we can discuss more of this as, as the hearings continue, but I thought it would be interesting to the public to get a little sense of that. We're going to propose a budget for the host fee of about $279,000. That is about what we anticipate coming in for the host fee in 2015. Now, we may still have funds, more than that, already still in the host fee. We're expecting reimbursements from Capital Region Water. We didn't spend all of what was, what could have been spent from the host fee, so there, there'll be some additional funds that we can talk about allocating, but we felt that for budget purposes, we should establish a budget for just what we anticipated for 2015. And what we are proposing is what we already have on-book for the personnel, which includes the, the arborist, the recycling coordinator, and the planner. We're proposing purchasing a used compacting recycling truck as part of our major sanitation overhaul. That's in addition to the recycling truck we already have on order in our building. $70,000 for community cleanup reimbursements, and another $35,000 to cede our local grants discussion, which we've already talked about, and which we're going to put a process in place for next year. I want to just talk for a moment about the $70,000 for community cleanup reimbursements. I mentioned this to some residents last night, and this is a very exciting thing. Basically, this is going to allow the city's Public Works Department to continue to partner with, aggressively with neighborhood organizations that want to do cleanups. They can supply the labor, they can gather the trash, but somebody's got to pay for it. And right now, we have the situation where every time we have to pick up trash from, say, a community cleanup, the city has to pay the bill, and we don't have the money to do it, and we're proposing putting this money as a dedicated funding stream so that we can pay the bill to actually engage with those community cleanups. It's going to go a long way to making Harrisburg cleaner and to helping Public Works partner better with the community. All right. Six special revenue funds, and this is really quite something. The first of those is the, is what we're calling the Blight Remediation Fund, and this is a fund that essentially would benefit the codes department. You'll see that each of these six are, are sort of different departments. And we're taking about $152,000 that currently exists in these off-book account, book accounts, and we are putting that in the Blight Remediation Fund. We are, we are also, that would be the fund where we would transfer the money that we're putting in for the land bank. How does that fund, you know, where did that money come from to begin with? It came from certain permit penalties, money from salvage, things like that. But now, all of that will go into a special revenue fund, and any allocations from that fund would have to be approved from council. Also, if you approve the vacant property registry ordinance, which we have tonight, which will go to committee, of course, then any revenue that we receive from that could also go in the fund. We haven't budgeted spending that because we don't know what's going to come into the fund. And we do have a small, modest budget for tools and equipment of about $50,000 in that fund, so we can have a really good conversation about how we'd like to see that money used. Fund number two is what we're calling a special event and project reimbursement fund. It's basically to benefit Public Works. There's currently about $1,800 off-book that we'd like to use to cede that fund. We're not proposing spending that fund, but it does give people away if they'd like to make a donation to support our Public Works Department, or if they'd like to make a sort of targeted donation as opposed to giving to the general fund. They could donate to the new Public Works Special Revenue Fund. There's also a fund that we're going to establish for fire that has currently $76,000 in an off-book account, which is going to transfer into that. We're not putting a budget forth for that, but the chief, and, you know, will, will work as we need to allocate that money with you to allocate it appropriately. Police, there is $179,000 in off-book accounts that There's also a fund that we're gonna establish for FIRE that has currently $76,000 in an off-book account, which is gonna transfer into that. We're not putting a budget forth for that, but the chief, and you know, will work as we need to allocate that money with you to allocate it appropriately. Police, there is $179,000 in off-book accounts that we are putting in. Where does that money come from? I understand a lot of that comes from like forfeiture money and other things. I believe there's a portion of some of that money that you saw, which, before you and that amazing press conference earlier this week, that will eventually make its way to the city of Harrisburg. That's gonna go into the account. And again, we're putting these on book in a fund to make them transparent and to also allow city council to weigh in on any allocation of those funds, and we're not proposing to allocate those funds yet. We're just saying, here they are, and we're putting them on book. We wanna establish a special revenue fund for WHBG just to make the operations of Channel 20 more transparent as well, easier to understand. We've got a small little budget we're proposing there based on about the $8,000 in revenue, sponsorship revenue that came in this year, which we think will again come in next year. And then finally, the sixth special revenue fund is one of the largest, and that is gonna be for the Parks and Recreation Department. We've got about $123,000 off-book that we're bringing on budget in that fund. That's gonna basically be four parts, City Island, Reservoir Park, events, and any money that we may hopefully receive again from Highmark. That money will now go on budget. So, City Island permitting goes into the City Island account. City Island expenses will come out of the City Island account, similar for Reservoir Park. I should note that for events, while we're gonna continue to fund the wonderful holiday parade that we just had in the New Year's celebration and other small events, we are not proposing the city running the Fourth of July or Capone for next year. Instead, we're planning to hopefully find an outside partner who will run those events. We're proposing a very small, modest $5,000 budget for each of those, which is mainly gonna be to advertise and to be a part of supporting those events. And we can talk about that as we move forward. And then finally, and this is the last slide of the highlights of the presentation, major, major investment in sanitation. As I said, historically, we have not invested in sanitation, and that's pretty much why we got to the brink of a push for privatization. I know the council rejected that push, and our philosophy over the course of this year is, all right, how can we make sanitation better, better, more efficient? And the first thing that we have to do to do that citywide is to invest in it. That's gonna include over $270,000 to basically overhaul the sanitation fleet, adding tippers to the various trucks and new chassis. We're gonna start an equipment inventory, sort of, these are basic things that you think we would have, but right now, whenever somebody needs a part, there's no inventory to draw on, you just have to order it as things break down. We wanna purchase a leaf collection truck. We wanna purchase some cameras that will be specifically dedicated to illegal dumping and the trash enforcement component. And then, we wanna put sizable new money into purchasing new commercial trash and recycling toters and residential trash and recycling toters. And we have had some consultants that were paid for by the state working and interviewing you, as you know, over the course of the year, and they will be issuing a report upcoming, and we'll talk about how we're going to roll all this out, but it's important that we put the investment in the budget now. Our plan is for the first six months of the year to focus on commercial trash collection and recycling in the city of Harrisburg and move to redoing residential for the second half of next year, starting in the summer. And that'll mean new toters, new recycling containers that are much larger for individuals, a elimination of all outside hauling within the city of Harrisburg, and attempt to capture all of that trash. And remember, as we increase recycling, which is gonna be easy to do because we really don't recycle much at all right now, we have to always meet that put-or-pay, and we believe that we can continue to meet that put-or-pay if we focus on bringing all commercial accounts in the city into the city system, many of which we just don't handle now because we don't have the capacity to do it, we don't have the equipment to do it, and we are proposing new hirings and new equipment to do it. So, that is, I think, a very exciting and positive and optimistic but realistic budget prognostication for the new year. I know we have multiple hearings set up, and we'll have all the bureau and department heads here to discuss it with you, and I thank you very much for allowing me the time to present some of the highlights to you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly is impressive that we're gonna have a balanced budget, but I certainly have a lot of questions regarding how you're gonna implement this budget as far as all the new purchases and investments that you wanna make. So, I look forward to the budget hearings.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to courtesy of the floor. I will start to my right. Anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so, and tonight I will limit you two minutes only, please. We have a large audience here tonight, and I'm sure everyone wants to be heard.
Okay, I won't take too much of your time. My name is Robert Kennedy, chairman of the Faith-Based Committee Training and Operation, especially for the United States Army Vet Services. We have a new initiative called the Save American Youth slash Vet. What I've done is connected my international VSO, Veteran Organization, with the local community. Now, if you hear me say "I," it's not "I," it's Dolphin County. Okay, so, under the system of Dolphin County, system of care of Dolphin County, we're the one that administer, register, and oversee all the program, after-school programs. As well, after the after-school program, my faith-based organization takes the mentoring part of that, connect with the families and the at-risk youth and anybody that's in need in the county, and we continue to connect with them. Our next upcoming event is the 15th of December at the Farm Show. I helped register over 2,300 families that we are issuing letters to now. We're gonna take and connect with them up there, give them items and the resource of the county. As well, I spoke to Mayor in May, I think, about the crime initiative at the YMCA. Our junior probation officers and other officers from Dolphin County worked in the school with the children, okay? Our receiving rate saved the county $4 million. We have two what they call NRC centers, Neighborhood Reporting Centers. When the child is in the system, we work with them, and they do not go back to the system. Again, as I said before, the reason you don't hear of our children, because they don't make statistics. And the reason I'm so very passionate about that now, because I'm just gonna say one, Ferguson, that's all the word I'm gonna say, and the ICIS. ICIS is recruiting our kids, and we don't want the same thing to happen. What happened in our community today, there was a lot of violent and pressure built up, okay? Again, with the VSO program, when you take the officer in the school, I suggest you come to us and let us work with you, because our people already have a relationship with the school. Detective Tim Carter goes to training with every year at the Leadership Program, which I spoke about. Carl, Detective, I mean, Carl Singler, he was part of one of our program. We have a subsequent school, he'll tell you it worked well. Miss, your other person here, that she was one of our faith negotiator at the summit every year at 581 Colonial Club Road, we have a big faith summit. So, we're doing many things that the people don't know, and that's why I've been begging for the community to just come together.
Your time is up, sir.
And we'll save a lot of money.
Could you complete? Thank you.
And again, here on some of our committed, I pass them out.
Would you give him to our city clerk here, please, or assistant city clerk?
Yeah, I don't wanna.
Mr. Clayborne?
I just come around.
Thank you, next.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Horn. I live at 1526 Catherine Street, and I have the illegal dumping process. I called the dispatch to report illegal dumping from a neighbor at 1527 Notre Dame Street. There's couches, chairs, toilets, doors, everything you wanna name there. I didn't get a response back. They said they would take care of it, and still, this happened October the 1st, and here it is the end of November, nothing's done yet. What is my channels of handle on this process?
Well, you certainly have the right person in the audience tonight, and if you would give him a couple of minutes, meet with Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Meet with Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'd like to say this evening, a lot is happening across the United States. I'm just hoping that it won't happen here. We're hearing a lot of things about the city of Harrisburg is ready. Honorable Mayor, I hope you are. We talk about blight in the city. Some of the candidates played this city well. Some of the ones that ran on the ticket that they would help the blight, they would make sure that the trash, the garbage would be taken away. All I can say this evening, two things. I'm shocked with Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, that we allow and continuously allow filthy areas in the city, and they always say, we're gonna get to them. Honorable Mayor, once again, it's always a pleasure seeing you. I want to now become your ally instead of someone that doesn't like you, okay? And I say that very frankly. If you can do so much for the midtown and downtown Harrisburg, why can't you walk with a little black man toward, to Allison Hill one evening with Chief Carter and my grandmother that I speak very passionately about? Could you walk with me? Could I show you another part of this city that you refuse to go to? Because they wanna see you, because I'm saying one thing, I supported you, and they're asking me this question. Mr. Boyd, please go, because we don't want to go there. All I want to do is enrich our great city and turn it back the way it needs to be. And before I close, I'd like to say, Mayor, when are you gonna open up your bathroom? When are you going to open up your bathroom to the men instead of having the women's bathroom floating back and forth?
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, please.
Honorable member of council, Jeremy Domenico, South Allison homeowner. Real quick, yeah, I know you haven't reached us yet.
Before you, before you get into your issue, could you please restate your name and your address?
Sure, I'm sorry. Jeremy Domenico.
Okay.
Homeowner, South Allison Hill.
Okay.
First, you haven't reached us on the budget yet, but we, the homeowners of South Allison Hill are 100 in support of the Schimmel School Project and the retail outlet on 17th Street. We believe that would be really helpful to the crime. It'll light it up, it'll give the residents a really needed place to go to get help for the problems in Allison Hill. I live there. Secondly, I cannot thank the mayor enough for the budget, the money that you put aside for what we do. The young lady that was here about the trash, I found out yesterday that that's an issue. It will be taken care of, because that's what we do. That's what we in South Allison Hill do. We come together, we're rebuilding the community, and I can't thank you enough. That's why I voted for you. I really appreciate your time. Everybody have a fantastic Thanksgiving.
You too, Mr. Domenico. Thank you. Anyone else to my right? Come to the mic, please.
My name is John Gaspitch. I'm from Lower Paxton Township, but for 35 years, I served the Commonwealth at the Liquor Control Board at Third and Bose. I wanna thank everybody here, council people, the mayor, police, attorneys, members of the community. The reason I'm here tonight is my son, for 15 years, was a deputy sheriff with the Dolphin County Sheriff's Office, and he took early retirement to fulfill a promise that he made to his mother. He opened a restaurant in your city. It's called Anate's. It's in the old Third Street diner location, and it's next to the gentleman that sells flowers, next to Mary Sacks. And he told me today that I could tell you, Mr. Mayor, council people, before every holiday, every parade that you have, or whatever goes on, he gives 10% for the meals. He's open every day, seven days a week, 6:30 to 2:30, except on Saturdays and Sundays, open from 8:00 to 2:30, because on Friday nights and Saturday nights, he opens up to take care of the people that are spending time on Second Street in Restaurant Row, but after nine o'clock, they can't get anything to eat that's hot. And this way, he allows them to come in, have soup, sandwich, or whatever they want. And I wanna thank you for your hospitality. For me, all the years that we used to come to City Island and everywhere else, and we thank you for what we're gonna do with the city in the coming years, and thank you all again. I hope I didn't miss anybody. Thank you.
Now, John, you just took all the excitement out that I was gonna do tonight. I was gonna announce that under new business, Anate's. Yes, yes, I was. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else from the right? Anyone else in the middle? Sure, come to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Nieves. I live on 306 North Second Street. The issue I have is an old issue, which was standard parking. Now, I don't think it's fair that these guys are charging so much for these tickets, and I feel like the reason why they're charging these prices for these tickets is because since they can't tax anybody that lives or works downtown, they decided to charge for overpriced tickets, and that's the way that, you know, they're gonna get that money. And if you don't agree with the ticket price, you have no choice to pay it. You get three or more tickets, you get a boot on your car, and then you get a warrant out for your arrest, and then you have to pay for the boot and the court fines. So, that's just a, you know, money-making machine right there. I don't find any of this fair, and I don't think it's right, and I wanna know what you guys are gonna do about it. I almost died three times in Afghanistan, three times. I feel more hopeless dealing with standard parking than I did then. There is nothing I can do to fight this. I have eight tickets already. I live in downtown Harrisburg. I have eight tickets. That's $400 for eight tickets. $400. That is insanely ridiculous. It's insane, and it's insane that this has gone. I've been away for three and a half years. I'm surprised nobody's even said anything about it. I talked to everybody that lives downtown. Everybody tells me, this is ridiculous, these prices are ridiculous. Did you all ask anybody, who approved the standard parking? Was it you guys? Or did they just come out of nowhere and say, okay, we're just gonna do this? It was you, right?
It was an agreement.
It was an agreement?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so.
Through us and through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And not only that.
Mayor's office.
And not only that, but the zones. You have all these people living in downtown Harrisburg, and these zones are too small to park in. So, you're gonna tell me, because I live down here, I have to pay for a permit when I should be able to park for free because I live down here? $30. You guys are just bleeding everybody downtown for money, and it's ridiculous. If you wanna charge, if you wanna charge anybody, you should charge at night. Put the parking meters at night, so that drunk people and the people that live downtown to go to the clubs, they have enough money to pay for all this alcohol to go ball out. That's where you're missing out. Start, start the meters at, you know, from nine to two, and charge a reasonable price. You will make your money probably even more if you do that, instead of just attacking me. I feel like I'm being attacked everywhere I go. Like, every time I see a parking meter guy, I get scared. I'm like, where's my car at? What's today, is Tuesday, is the third, is the street cleaning? What's going on? I have a $30 ticket for street cleaning. $30. That's robbery. This is extortion. You guys should just, these parking meter guys, you should give them guns, just tell them to go to my house and rob me.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I got a little upset.
That's all right.
Certainly, sir, look out for, we're gonna have a meeting for the public sometime in January. I certainly hope that you attend that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, honorable president, Williams and Harrisburg City Council. Ron Chapel, Harrisburg, Third Street. And I've got a lot, I didn't know we were gonna be cut down to two minutes, so I'm gonna read my statements this time, read my talking points, okay? And it begins with America is in peril. Certain citizens of this country that have fought and died in uncountable numbers are now found to be looked upon as less than human. I'm speaking of black males, in particular, young black males in this society. We now have hateful talk show hosts, radio talk show hosts, like the Lim Balls, like the Hannities, like this despicable character here in Harrisburg, Matthews, who have objectified the young man that was killed, that was murdered in Ferguson, by calling him a gentle giant, you know, anything other than the human being that he was, you know? And for a person to be laid out in the street, to allow to lay in the street like yesterday's garbage, is quite inhumane. Okay, you know, America is creating for itself a new line of enemies, you know, like, we don't have, matter of fact, I'm gonna put this down, I don't need this. We, America has enough enemies already, and now you're turning young black males. You're vilifying them, and you're causing, what you're gonna do is create some very, very dangerous people, because when people are filled with hopelessness, well, then they also feel that they have nothing to lose, okay? The way black males are treated in this society... The way black males are treated in this society is a disgrace, you know? We have fought, and I have fought, and I've had those that fought along with me in a war. We have fought in every war this nation have ever had, you know? But you have vilified us as if we're the enemy, you know? And it's just unfair, and if you keep doing this up, I'm gonna tell you something. You're gonna create a very bad situation in this country. This is no threat, so don't nobody try to rewrite what I'm saying and make it into any kind of terroristic threat, but I'm gonna tell you something. People deserve to have their lives treated and respected with dignity.
Okay, Mr. Chappell, thank you.
All right, furthermore, if I can say one last thing, and I'll get kicked out if it calls me to. The so-called prosecutor in that particular case, he orchestrated all this stuff to make an announcement at night, and also, when he gave his talking points last night after the verdict, it seems as though he was more for the defense than the prosecution. They had the man go to a grand jury where he could testify, build up a personal relationship with the jurors, and where he wasn't something to be cross-examined. That was completely wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell. Anyone else from the middle, please? Anyone to my left? Seeing none, thank you. Moving on to, with the agenda, approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of November the 12th, 2014. Are there any admissions, deletions, corrections, council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Minutes stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Williams on Administration Committee meeting on November the 13th, 2014. The Administration Committee had a meeting on November the 13th, 2014, at 5:30 PM. In attendance were council members Reed and Allen, along with committee chair, myself. The resolution presented was to support the ban the box, which is directed at removing questions regarding criminal history from employment applications for city jobs. In support of the legislation was Brandon Flood, Executive Director of the PA Legislative Black Caucus, along with Juanita Edgerton Grant, Director of Cram. Mr. Flood stated that Harrisburg, being the capital of the state, would set an example as Lancaster, Philadelphia, and Pittsburgh have done on a local level. Applicants who see the box on the application become discouraged. Removing the box would give them a fair opportunity towards gainful employment. Ms. Grant indicated that ex-offenders do qualify for certain positions but feel that they are discriminated against because of the box, which asks, "Do you have a criminal history?" By removing the question, convicted citizens would perceive that businesses would not eliminate them from the onset as well as to not preclude them from employment. Thirteen states have embraced statewide ban the box. Fair hiring laws for state employment are public and private employment. Over 70 municipalities have adopted the law for public employment and/or city or county employment. Before this council can adopt this type of legislation, we certainly have to scrutinize what language to incorporate in the resolution that would address certain positions that are exceptions, such as childcare workers, police officers, firefighters, et cetera. This resolution will be on hold in the Administration Committee until the solicitor and I work out the language that needs to be inserted. And that's the end of my report. Moving on to report from Chair Baltimore on the Public Safety Committee meeting of November the 17th, 2014. Mr. Baltimore, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee met on Monday, November 17th. Came to order 5:30 here in chambers, and in attendance were members Susan Brown Wilson, Sandra Reed, and Ben Allen. Public Safety Committee, business included, Resolution 112, 2014, which is a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of an application to the PA Liquor Control Board to exempt a specific area of the city from a section of code that provides a licensee may not use or permit to be used inside or outside the premises, a loudspeaker or similar device whereby the sound of music or other entertainment or other advertisement thereof can be heard beyond the licensee's property line, and in favor of enforcing the city's own amended noise ordinance. And this resolution was primarily... was introduced primarily to extract the enforcement powers of noise violations by the Liquor Control Board to be enforced by the City of Harrisburg Bureau of Police. There's also an extension of the area that leaves downtown and goes up North Third Street corridor to an area up towards Riley Street, and the boundaries should be described in the resolution that we may pass tonight. We also discussed Resolution 116. It's a resolution authorizing and approving the execution of a professional services proposal with Weatherspoon &amp; Williams LLC to provide design specs and design calculations and traffic signal construction plans based on PennDOT standards to repair the traffic apparatus at Sixth and McClay Streets. And this is a minority-owned company whose bid was well below the others, but the resolution was introduced following an accident that destroyed the signal at Sixth and McClay, and it has been assessed that the apparatus has been historically located too close to the corner, and the new equipment will incorporate a new design that will allow greater clearance. And both of these resolutions are on tonight's agenda, and I urge members to give your careful consideration and vote accordingly, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Moving on to report from Chair Reed on the Public Works Committee meeting of November 17th and the Special Public Meeting of November the 20th, 2014. Mr. Reed, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Public Works had a joint committee meeting with Chair Baltimore. Public Works Committee meeting was held November 17th, 2014. Present were myself, councilman Baltimore, councilwoman Susan Brown Wilson, councilman Alat. From the administration were the mayor, the city engineer, Mr. Wayne Martin. Also present was Mr. Tony Guianopoulos from the Efficiency Network. Discussed in the meeting on November 17th was Resolution 118, which was a resolution approving suburban lighting consultants to do a complete audit of our streetlights and utility bills. We do not have an electrical engineer in the city, so city suburban lighting can provide professional services to do this study. They will be paid at an hourly rate of $100 per hour, not to exceed 200 hours already budgeted in streetlight costs. The assessment will be working in tandem with the Efficiency Network. I am recommending this bill to be approved. Also discussed was Bill 119, which is approving an inventory audit agreement with the Efficiency Network. They will do a physical inventory along with reconciliation process. The goal is to have a significant cost savings and energy savings and savings from overpayment from PP&amp;L. At the conclusion of the study, we will have an accurate inventory along with significant cost savings from recoup from overpayment and bills. On November 20th, there was a Special Public Works Committee meeting. Present was myself, councilwoman Susan Brown Wilson. Also, we had a panel which included the mayor, the city solicitor, Mr. Neil Grover, the deputy solicitor, Mr. Doug Walmer, the recycling coordinator, John Raring, city engineer, Mr. Wayne Martin. Accompanying the law students was professional John Durnback from Whiterford University School of Law. Each student presented a six-minute presentation on different sustainability ordinances, which included recycling, composting, green and paved areas, green infrastructure, sustainable billing development, and mobile food vendors. Each student presented a detailed report on the possible amendments that could be made to the current city ordinances in those specific areas. The students spent many hours becoming familiar with our ordinances and the ordinances of neighboring cities. This project is part of their grade, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of their ideals turned into new amendments for these ordinances in these areas. And thank you very much, Madam President, that's all I have.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Moving on to report from Chair Kuplinsky on the Community Economic Development Committee meeting of November the 24th, 2014. Mr. Kuplinsky, are you ready?
I am, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Community and Economic Development Committee held a meeting last evening on November 24th, and present was Councilwoman Alat and Councilwoman Daniels. We looked at four resolutions. The first one was to take a look at the Paxton Street Fire Station, the one down here on Second Street, and officially take the steps to list that as a property for sale and use that agent named Wendell Hoover to be the licensed realtor for that property at 336 and 338 South Second Street. The administration presented the facts and necessary details that we needed for that, and we'll be voting on that this evening. We also looked at Resolution 120 of 2014. Interesting project put forth by Ruth Davis, who runs an organization called Pennsylvania Counseling Services. They have counseling services for drug and alcohol treatment and psychological treatment as well in nine other places, including Redding, Lancaster, and York, and they want to renovate the Schimmel School, which is at 548 South Seventeenth Street, and establish a mental health and addiction treatment center at that location. Again, the administration presented their views on it, and we heard from Ms. Davis and Mr. Dr. Smith, who started the organization 32 years ago, and we also heard positive comments from the community about the project as well. That also will be up for a vote tonight. Also heard about Resolution 121. Administration presented its views on a, I guess, for a new parking lot from Pinnacle Health Hospitals, which is, as we all know, they continue to grow and expand, and one of the concerns that they continue to have is parking for their own employees. And this would take the strip, the little triangle, as you're leaving the city, going out onto New York, and Hershey exits, and then at the same time, the entrance into the city off of the ramp of 83 on Second Street and then Paxton Street. So that little triangle there, which is a city-owned property, which formerly was, I think, a lasted daycare center, and there's been some storage for the city. The building is falling down on itself. It's dilapidated, and so they are proposing that it be demolished and construct a accessory surface parking lot. I think it's 78 parking spots for their employees. We'll also be voting on that tonight as well. Finally, we looked at Resolution 122 of 2014, and this was a land development plan for DF Distributors to perform at the retail center with seven 950-square-foot units and one 1,925-square-foot unit on the existing gravel lot, which is on Seventeenth Street, directly across from the Hamilton Health Center. And they're looking for, I think they have a convenience store already locked in, as well as a sub shop. They're looking for barber shops and nail salons and things. That area, as you know, is a continued area of concern and blight. Hamilton Health Center is a shining beacon, really, in the neighborhood, but even the many, many people that work there don't have anywhere to go to get some of the services they need, so we heard a lot of positive comments about that project as well, and we'll be voting on that this evening. All four projects seem to be smart and good, and will move the city forward, and I would urge a firm vote on all four.
Thank you, Mr. Kuplinsky. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill 18 of 2014. Mr. Clayborne, please read that to record.
Bill 18 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Allen and seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's an ordinance providing for the residential and commercial 10-year tax abatement and exemption programs in the City of Harrisburg for qualifying improvements and new construction, designating the city's boundaries to be the qualifying boundaries for deteriorated neighborhoods in a residential property program, designating the city's boundaries as the qualifying boundaries for a commercial property program, providing for tax abatement and exemption schedules for qualifying improvements to and new construction of residential and commercial properties throughout Harrisburg, providing incentives for additional exemptions for job creation, ensuring minority business participation, prevailing wage and residential participation in qualifying improvement and new construction projects, authorizing an administrator of these programs, ensuring the due process of applicants by authorizing the creation of a board of review, amending Chapter 5-503 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg to provide for these new programs, including the repeal of sections inconsistent with these programs and related matters.
That would be placed in Community Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Bill 19, 2014.
Bill 19, 2014, was moved by Mr. Allen and seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the City of Harrisburg for the year 2015.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Bill 20 of 2014.
Bill 20 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is an ordinance amending the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title 5, Licensing and Taxation, Part 5, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter 5-501, Property Tax, by establishing for the year 2015 a tax levy on land and improvements and providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed, and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year 2006 tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
That also would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Bill 21 of 2014.
Bill 21 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Daniels and seconded by Mr. Allen. It is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg, creating Title 11 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, 1996, as amended to be entitled blight remediation, and creating Part 111-100 thereof entitled abandoned real property in Sections 111-101.1 at sequential thereof, providing for purpose, intent, and applicability of the ordinance, requiring the registration and maintenance of certain real property by mortgages, providing for penalties and enforcement, as well as the regulation, limitation, and reduction of abandoned real property within the City of Harrisburg, providing for severability, repealer, codification, and the effective date.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. Ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 99, 2014.
Resolution 99 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Kuplinsky, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution approving a marketing and listing agreement for professional services with Remax Realty Associates through Wendell Hoover, a licensed realtor, for the sale or lease of real property located at 336 through 338 South Second Street, a city-owned real property asset.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution 112, 2014.
Resolution 112 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Baltimore and seconded by Ms. Wilson. It is a resolution authorizing and approving the submission of an application with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to exempt a specific area of the City of Harrisburg from Section 49334 of Liquor Code, which provides that a license may not use or permit to be used inside or outside of the premises, a loudspeaker or similar device whereby the sound of music or other entertainment or the advertisement thereof can be heard beyond the licensee's property line, in favor of enforcing the city's own amended noise ordinance.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 112, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Madam President?
Yes.
At the committee meeting, there was a request that the map be amended.
Okay, so there's an amendment?
Our office has submitted that amendment, the description of the area to add a corridor as defined that evening, which I will recite if my memory is correct.
You don't have a copy of the amendment?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you what it is.
Oh, it's in there?
It's in there.
Okay.
It includes how to be contiguous with the existing boundary, so it goes up northward on Third Street on both sides, or technically on the western side of Third Street, up into Verbeek Street, where it then goes easterly up until Sixth Street, which then merges left onto Fulton Street, and then turns westward onto Seaford Street, back to Third Street, and then to the eastern side of Third Street, up until Riley Street, and then in the northern, no, I'm sorry, the easterly direction of Riley Street, until it gets to Seventh Street, and then it goes, yes, it's a map that we've had to talk about a lot upstairs, and then it goes northerly onto Seventh Street until it gets to Harris Street, and then it goes westerly on Harris Street to Sixth Street, and then back again southerly on Sixth Street till it returns to Riley Street.
Fulton Street.
Riley Street is the very last place.
Okay, then we need, okay. Because it says... Okay, then we need, okay. Because it says, it continues along the Sixth Street, merges with Fulton Street, then westerly on Fulton to the center line of Safer Street?
Yes.
Then with North Street, then Riley Street, and then back to the center line of Seventh Street. Okay. Okay. Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none. Pardon me? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Abstain.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 112 has passed.
Resolution 112 has passed.
Thank you. Moving on. We remove Resolution 115 from the agenda. We'll move on to Resolution 116 of 2014, please.
Resolution 116 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Baltimore and seconded by Mr. Allot. It is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services proposal with Wetherspoon &amp; Williams LLC to provide design specs, design calculations, and traffic signal construction plans based upon PennDOT standards to repair the traffic at Sixth and McClay Streets.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 116? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 116 carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 118.
Resolution 118 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Suburban Lighting Consultants, Incorporated, to provide professional engineering services for the City of Harrisburg LED streetlight upgrade project.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 118? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 118 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 119.
Resolution 119 was moved by Ms. Reed and seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution approving an inventory audit agreement with the Efficiency Network to provide an inventory of existing streetlights and other city-owned exterior lights, and to perform an audit of streetlight and exterior light utility bills related to the City of Harrisburg LED streetlight upgrade project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Resolution 119? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 119 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 120.
Resolution 120 was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky and seconded by Ms. Williams. It is a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Ruth Davis, President of the Pennsylvania Counseling Services, on behalf of PCS, to renovate the exterior of the building located at 548 South Seventeenth Street, which is the site of the former Schimmel School, in order to establish a mental health and addiction treatment center at that location.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 120?
Yes, Madam President. Okay.
Just a correction, it's interior, not the exterior.
Ms. Wilson, what did you?
The interior, it's not the exterior.
Okay.
For the legislation.
All right, thank you. Ms. Reed?
I would not be supporting Bill 120 because it seems as though, when it comes to economic development in certain neighborhoods, it only seems that we can approve the building of halfway houses, mental health facilities, and probation and parole offices, treatment centers. Now, this is the same as this Mental Health and Addiction and Treatment Center in the middle of a residential neighborhood that children, children live in this neighborhood. I believe that this is an important facility. The location of such facility should be placed , you have the entire Wise Market area where there's not a lot of houses, not a lot of residents. This facility's gone dead in the heart of a residential neighborhood, and I'm really upset about the fact that it continuously seems like when we keep talking about economic development, all the good economic development that we could put into the city, like Resolution 122, don't necessarily go into the neighborhoods that need them. You're putting Resolution 122 in the benefit for the Hamilton Health Project. If the Hamilton Health Center wasn't there, you would never put that development there. But consistently keep putting mental health facilities, probation and parole offices, and halfway houses in our residential neighborhoods. They're not going uptown, they're not going to midtown, they're not going any place that they want their economic development. So I will not be in support of Resolution 120 because of that. There's so many vacant buildings in the city that this mental health facility can go to, and it does not need to be in an area where our children are going to be in jeopardy. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, very good point.
Madam President?
Yes.
Ms. Davis did not specify why she chose Schimmel School over Hamilton or another school potentially, to put this, which may have been in Uptown or another area of the city, but this did receive positive comments last night from members of the South Allison Hill community, and folks, in fact, even folks that had been helped by this particular company, for-profit company in particular. They bought the building from the school district. It's, they bought it for $680,000. They continue to make renovations to it, and they told us that the entire building was gutted. All the cameras were stripped out, it was vandalized, and so they are making an investment of time and money. I know that they needed this large of a space because they're going to have up to 25 counselors there, and so I understand and appreciate the concern. But again, just to potentially clarify, and I wish that Ms. Davis was here tonight to answer your questions more fully, but they did make a good presentation, and they want to add to certainly that Seventeenth Street corridor in the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplinsky. Any other statements or comments?
Yeah, I would agree with, strangely, with Ms. Reed. Too often, and so, I don't know, maybe, I understand that the building has been purchased. It just seems like Harrisburg has given away their inventory. We put $20 million in that building. The citizens did. $20 million to renovate that school. $20 million. No more, less than 10 years ago. And so for the school district to sell that building for 600-plus thousand, it was a giveaway. And now we're talking about a for-profit business with a giveaway. And we're starting to hear it, and it seems to be resonating throughout this community, because there's another building that went in, and I'm on the bandwagon with her now, because she just opened the door up, at Seventeenth and Bow Street, which is another residential neighborhood where they're putting in a similar type of project. So we need to be careful where we're placing these things throughout our community, where our children are. It should be about encouraging them. It should not be telling them that you've got mental health places or addiction places that are going in, because if you're on drugs or if you have a mental health problem, that's going to be there for you. What are we doing here? What are we setting our children up for? What about the future? So guess what? I'm going to be on her bandwagon tonight. My vote's going to be no, too. And I understand they purchased the building, but I think we need to find something better for that community. And I'd like to ask the question, even though, Mr. Kaplinsky, and I missed your meeting last night, and I wish I would have been here, but how many residents did they really survey in that area? Because I've walked through that neighborhood.
I understand.
And so how many people's names, how many people's signed that, the approval that says, hey, yeah, we want it, we agree. And I mean, when I say the border, I'm talking about from Eighteenth Street down to Thirteenth Street, and from Paxton Street over to Dairy Street. How many names do we have? Because in that condensed area, you have well over 10,000 people living, households. So how many people do we have that actually sign that? And I've walked that, I've walked those streets. Are they families? Are they renters? Are they owners? Becomes the question.
Sure.
Do they own the property?
I wish you were here to ask those questions last night. We would have had a...
Because I would have certainly been here asking those questions. I don't want a renter to tell me you want that business here, because he doesn't have the investment in the community. He's just renting for a period of time, and then he's out until he gets evicted or till he can't pay the payment anymore. So what are we really doing here? So I would say that we take a second look at this, and I wanted to really make sure that we surveyed that community and said, yes. So my vote tonight's going to be no on that right now.
Thank you.
And I understand, and I understand that you did your work, but I would ask that you keep it in committee and ask them to come back, maybe, because I have some questions for them, and I'd like to find out who in that community they did talk to.
Thank you.
Because I know quite a few people in that community that would have said no.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Kaplinsky?
There's at least 150 signatures here, South Twenty-Fifth Street, Market Street.
South Twenty-Fifth Street? That's on Seventeenth Street. What do I need South Twenty-Fifth Street for?
Yeah, wait a minute.
South Twenty-Fifth Street, Brad's on the other side.
Well, you should have this document for you to be able to look at and support the petition from them.
I'll do it.
Well, I would like to make a point as well. Maybe I would like to make a motion to table this.
Excuse me, can I make a comment before you table?
No, no, can't make a comment after the table, but I will, but I will let you, since I'm the chair, I will let you make a statement. Usually you don't make a comment after a table, but because I didn't ask if any other comments, I will allow you to make a comment.
Okay. At this point?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I understand the sentiments of people who oppose this, and I also understand the need for it. In our community, we have, we have some mental health issues, and we have some addiction issues, and some of these folks are really trying to get their lives together, and I think we tend to not really realize how prevalent a problem we do have in our, in our, in our city. And there are times when, you know, we've got that NIMBY attitude, not in my backyard, and I understand that, but, but we should also be a community that's open to helping, to be a part of people trying to renovate their lives. And I think that's a compassionate type of society we want. We can't just push people out on the fringes when, when we have facilities that need occupation. Yeah, there are neighborhoods, but these people might be less harmful than, than your neighbor. These folks are trying to get their lives together, and I think we should consider the compassion that it takes to allow it into our neighborhoods, and for that reason, I'll probably be supporting it.
Before I say table again, I motion to table, I will extend the invitation to have any more comments from Ms. Daniel and Mr. Allot.
I think the community was really outspoken yesterday in support of this bill, and we asked a lot of the questions. I understand the concerns that Councilwoman Reed and Councilwoman Wilson raised, but this is an opportunity to use a building that's vacant. Otherwise, it will be vacant for a very long time, until someone else takes it up. It's also a mental health facility dealing with addiction issues that's in walking distance to people, that will be affordable to people and accessible. And, you know, the combination of this building being used in a service capacity, as well as the support that we received, we saw from the community, you know, I would support allowing this project to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Allot, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the only comment I'll make, I would also support this resolution, and largely, you know, mental health is not a dirty word, and it's not something that we should be afraid of discussing and offering opportunities for people to rehabilitate themselves and make better choices. And I think, you know, I frankly don't care what section the city is in, and I live in Midtown, I'd welcome it in my neighborhood because it's about people trying to help themselves. And so I would actually support this resolution.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Reed and Ms. Wilson. We continuously have boarding homes that are turned into boarding rooms, and typically Harrisburg is a residential area. We continuously put institutions like this in our residential area, and I myself, I'm just kind of tired of being a homeowner and having a institution such as this, or even boarding rooms, in my area. And I think we need to put a stop to it at a point, because she had a good valid appointment, she said Wise Market, 29th Street, there's no children. That building's been vacant for almost 15 years. And I agree with Ms. Wilson, because at the time I was on the board, we renovated that Schimmel School at the price tone of $19.5 million, almost $20 million. And for them to get $680,000, I'm appalled. And we didn't even get any money from the Department of Education as far as on our renovation. So I am not going to be in support of this tonight. I did ask for a table. I will rescind that, and I will call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Resolution 120 carries.
Okay, moving on. Council members, I think we just should be very wary of how many institutions we allow to come into the City of Harrisburg. As I stated before, recently I've been made aware of another boarding house.
Seventeenth and Bowes.
And I just think it's ridiculous that we continuously have people coming into the City of Harrisburg and converting their property into boarding rooms. I mean, this is almost like 15 boarding rooms, boarding houses in the City of Harrisburg, transients from Redding, from New York, New Jersey, staying for a period of one week, and then committing a crime. So I think we need to be very, very careful when we approve
That's exactly right.
...these different types of houses and different types of mental health, and not only mental health, and I'm agree with mental health. I do think that people need help, and I do think that they need to have a place to go to, but we should be very careful where we place those particular institutions when we talk about our children.
They don't have any.
We have too many vacant properties in the City of Harrisburg. Not only do we have the Wise Building, but we have the Thrift Building on 29th Street as well. That's a vacant property. It's a large building. It's been vacant for 15 years as well. Moving on, I will stop saying what I need to say about that and move on to Resolution 121. Is there any questions or comments? I'm sorry, please read it into record.
Resolution 121 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky and seconded by Mr. Allot. A resolution approving a preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Paul Turbin, Vice President of Pinnacle Health Hospitals, on behalf of Pinnacle to demolish the existing building at 157 Paxton Street and construct an accessory surface parking lot for employees of the Pinnacle Health Hospital.
Any questions or comments on 121? I certainly want to congratulate Pinnacle Health for removing this eyesore from that particular area. It's been there for the last 10 years, and it's been flooded, and it's been on fire, so I'm glad that they're going to do something with that, that property at that location, so I commend them. Any other comments? Moving on, but please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 121 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 122.
Resolution 122 of 2014 was moved by Mr. Kaplinsky, seconded by Ms. Williams. It is a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan for DNF Distributors to develop a retail center with seven 950-square-feet units and one 1,925-square-feet unit on an existing gravel lot located at 137 South Seventeenth Street.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Resolution 122?
Yes, I have one. This is, again, when we're talking about economic development, economic development should be to the benefit of those that live here. We're continuously developing in areas, which is, this is a good project. I'm going to vote for it. But if, if, if the Hamilton Health Center wasn't there, that lot's been vacant for 30 years. Would they actually put that development there? It's for the benefit of those transient people that come into the city and benefit from the use of our city, that take their high salaries back into the suburbs, and so we're going to make sure we develop for them so that they can get some use out of it. But yet, when it comes to things for our children and for our residents, we don't think, we don't think that far ahead. Yeah, we'll put this there because now the school district's the Seventeenth and State, and now we have... Seventeenth and State, and now we have Hamilton Health Center, and they need someplace to go get their lunch, and they may need to drop off their dry cleaning, and things like that. But our residents have needed this for years. When you're talking about economic development, economic development should be beneficial to the residents first, not the transient people that here five days a week to collect the paycheck. That's all I have to say, Madam President.
Anything, anyone else on Resolution One Twenty-two? I'm sorry, I have to apologize to Mr. Kuplinsky, but I had a prior engagement, I was not here for the meeting, but on behalf of this gentleman, I do know him, and on behalf of him, I would like to say, Ms. Reed, that he has been trying to get the proper funding for this building, and he finally got the required finances that he needed, and his priority is to make sure that the residents in the city of Harrisburg get first priority to all jobs. So on behalf of him, I just wanted to let you know that.
Are they going to be open on the weekends? Probably.
On the weekends?
No.
I don't know that, but I do know that everything that he does, he makes sure, so he hires within the city of Harrisburg residents. I did have an opportunity to sit down with him when he required, when he acquired the funding for this, and it's been in the works for about a year and a half. And he did promise that he would give first priority to all the residents in the city of Harrisburg first.
I don't have a problem with the residents.
And he presently hires residents of the city of Harrisburg at his distribution center on Seventh Street. Any other questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Resolution One Twenty-two passes.
Please read Resolution One Twenty-three.
Resolution One Twenty-three of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution appointing Ms. Dana Rockoff to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act Twenty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution One Twenty-four.
Resolution One Twenty-four of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution appointing Mr. Ellis Roy to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act Twenty-two of two thousand fourteen.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution One Twenty-five.
Resolution One Twenty-five of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution appointing Mr. James Allison to serve on the new civil service board established in accordance with Act Twenty-two of two thousand fourteen.
And that also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution One Twenty-six.
Resolution One Twenty-six of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Kuplinsky. It is a resolution authorizing the approval, execution, and submission of a partial consent decree between the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Environmental Protection, Capital Region Water, and the city of Harrisburg to facilitate the conformity of identified aspects of the water and sewer systems and operations serving the municipal area with established environmental standards and regulations.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution One Twenty-seven.
Resolution One Twenty-seven of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It is a resolution confirming the appointment of Douglas L. Walmer Esquire to serve as the Deputy City Solicitor for the city of Harrisburg.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution One Twenty-eight.
Resolution One Twenty-eight of two thousand fourteen was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It is a resolution confirming the appointment of Marty Riffen Esquire to serve as an Assistant City Solicitor for the city of Harrisburg.
And that also will be placed in Administration Committee. Thank you. Any old business, council members? Moving on to new business, council member, Mr. Baltimore, start with you, any new business? Ms. Daniels. Mr. Kuplinsky.
Sure. I'll be having a meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee on this upcoming Monday, December first, to discuss the LRTA or tax abatements, and I think we may be adding a couple other items on it as well in a type of joint meeting, and we're going to talk to Ms. Reed and the President about that, but that's going to be at five